Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. The Speaker, I'd like to move that Resolution Number Sixty-two be placed in the third reading file.
On the motion, Senator Pegliano, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, Bill Sixty-two is a resolution that would support a resolution introduced in the United States House of Representatives, House Resolution One Twenty-One in the Hundred and Tenth Congress. And the subject matter of House Resolution One Twenty-One is expressing a sense that the government of Japan should formally acknowledge, apologize, and accept historical responsibility in a clear and unequivocal manner from its Imperial Armed Forces coercion of young women into sexual slavery known to the world as comfort women during Japan's colonial and wartime occupation of Asia and the Pacific Islands. As you know, Mr. Speaker, we continue our efforts -- excuse me, Mr. Speaker -- in we continue our efforts through the good efforts, of course, the War Claims Review Commission, and we have one member, a sitting member of this body, the former Speaker, and I believe he was Vice Chair of the War Claims Commission, Senator Antonio Pincot, who continues the efforts of trying to receive and push the United States itself into accepting responsibility for what the atrocities performed upon the people of Guam by the Japanese Colonial Army. And of course, as one of the atrocities and brutalities that were inflicted upon the people of Guam is the same as what was inflicted by these Japanese Imperial forces in the occupation of other Asian Pacific Island and territories, and that is the issue of the comfort women. It is not an easy subject for people to address, and you will not get an overwhelming response to this matter of getting firsthand testimony and evidence of it. You get it on a one-on-one basis. On a public basis, it really is a sense of shame associated with this, and the true victims of this continue to be victimized because of the fact that they are made to be ashamed that this force upon them was done by these Imperial Army, and that they continue to suffer the shame. And I think that the way to close that chapter, of course, Mr. Speaker, is to, as we all say here on Guam, not only for this sector of the brutality, but all brutalities inflicted upon the people of Guam, is the formal recognition and acceptance of responsibility and accountability for those actions. So Bill Resolution, I mean Resolution Sixty-two from this body would do just that, lend our efforts in the global call, really, for Japan to continue it, that will be all packaged and resounding in the United States House Resolution One Twenty-One. And so I ask my good colleagues here to lend their support and lend their voices to trying to bring, once and for all, the formal acknowledgement and acceptance of historical responsibility for these actions, not only for all the comfort women, but for our own who had this brutality inflicted upon them. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator -- Speaker Pincot, you recognize?
Yes, so, Mr. Speaker, thank you. Resolution, I support Resolution Number Sixty-two. You know, this is not the first time that we tried to do something like this. Of course, the people of Guam have been crying for the last, how many, since back in nineteen four, from forty-four up to the present time, to actually recognize and acknowledge the fact that, yes, there are a lot of women, a lot of them already gone, and that they were placed in a spot where they become sort of at the pleasure of the Imperial Army of Japan. And here in Guam, during the War Claims Review Commission, there were a lot of women that actually testified, but some of them couldn't even face me or anyone in the commission when they were telling us exactly their experience. Many of our ladies right now still won't even talk about it. They want, you know, and if they start talking about it, they start crying, they couldn't even finish the story that they're about to tell. But the story is finished by just what you see in their eyes and the way they actually express themselves, that, yes, there were so many, so much atrocities that were committed during that time that it was, it's really very difficult to relate. But, yes, I know, I know for a fact that even within my own family and relatives and friends were placed in such predicaments and with that problem as being one of the comfort women during that time. And so, Mr. Speaker, just one information I'd like to come out publicly to is the fact that during the War Claims Review Commission deliberation back in Washington, D.C., the Chairman of that Commission was requested and was passed by the Commission to request the Secretary of State, you know, to communicate with Japan and the Prime Minister, and requesting for an apology and acknowledge apology from the Japanese government regarding, you know, the atrocities that were committed. And I think even now, our people, really, it's not the question of the war reparation in terms of dollars, it's the question of that acknowledgement that, yes, our people were placed in that spot, were placed in the predicament where, of course, we have no control over, and, you know, we are the victims, and even the children of those people are still the victims right now. And unless there's a public acknowledgement of this, it will not go to rest. So, Mr. Speaker, thank you very much, and I hope my colleagues do acknowledge the fact that, yes, Resolution Number Sixty-two is being discussed, and Resolution Number Sixty-two will be voted on, you know, either today or tomorrow. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Senator Wampat, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I arise in support of Resolution Number Sixty-two. This resolution is a long overdue resolution, and it also covers what I consider another dark chapter of Guam. Seems as though there are so many incidences during that time, Guam's history, where so much atrocities have been imposed on the people of Guam, and the most, and the one that's of most concern here is the women. Women seems to be, women and children always seem to be the most vulnerable in cases of war, and not just, of course, here, but throughout the world. History has shown that, if anything else, this is one particular crime that is always associated with war. And as a result of that, of course, many of the women here in Guam have actually come together to try to make sure that whenever the military is involved, we've got to make sure that none of these things ever happen. And even to this day, we've actually heard of women who are not necessarily, of course, commissioned to serve as sexual servitude elsewhere, but are basically just individually done and women are forced into it. It's a shame, it's a crime in itself, it's a total violation for women, and I'd like to say that I'm comforted to know that in this particular resolution is that they are the two men, basically, who have proffered this resolution, and I thank both of you for being very sensitive to the issues of women and young girls. So, Mr. Speaker, I hope that we will be able to close this other dark chapter of Guam, and I know my colleagues without even having to ask, will come out in full support of Resolution Sixty-two. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I can't, only the person has to do it, only Ben can do that. So, can I ask if the body would be willing to, I would like to be the third co-sponsor of this resolution?
Do you really?
And can I extend it a little bit more to the other two women as well?
You don't want to give Senator Blasch's chance to be the third co-sponsor, or?
No, I think in this case, I think it's important that the women stand up for women as well, but it's comforting to know that we have the men who are taking the lead for us. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, on the motion to place Senator Wampat as the third co-sponsor, is any objection? Objection. So ordered, Senator Blasch, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I also stand in support of this resolution, and I want to not only applaud but thank the sponsors, the author and the sponsors of this legislation. I am very much full support of also the good Senator from Inara, and her request to be sponsored too as well. You know, Mr. Speaker, you turn on the TV today, you watch of another war, of another conflict that's going on, you know, somewhere in the world, and one of the things that's always talked about is the atrocities that occur with the unintended victims of the conflicts. And, you know, there's always the newscasts, the reports, there's the sentiments that are always expressed that this shouldn't happen, they should not be a part, they should not be the victims. And what this resolution hopes to resolve is, you know, the atrocities that occurred to our people, our mothers, our grandmothers, our aunties, our sisters, over sixty years And this is bittersweet because it's sweet in the sense that there hopefully is, now there is that chance that our manumco, our relatives, that had to go and experience these atrocities, can finally get some resolution to that cloud that was hanging over their heads. You know, Mr. Speaker, I remember very vividly the hearing, the public hearing that we had on this resolution, and the emotions that were shared. And to this day, you know, this is something that still weighs very heavy, I'm sure not only in my heart, but in the hearts of every single individual that's on this floor. And in light of now even more so the recent discussions that we have on our island of an impending military buildup that involves Japan, I think this is something that really needs to be and has to be addressed before our people can start to recognize and understand and appreciate what's going to be happening in the future. It's a dark past, Mr. Speaker, that we, the people of Guam, for, again, our manumco, for those still present today and those who have since passed on, that it is this body's obligation to continue to press, to demand, if you will, that we too were victims of these ugly acts, and we too are deserving of the apologies. So with that, Mr. Speaker, again, like I said, I stand in support of this, and I thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to provide that.
Thank you, Senator Blasch. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on the resolution? On the motion to place the resolution in third reading, is there any objection? Without objection, the motion carries.
We are now on Bill, Senator Lohan? We are now on Bill Sixty, I believe, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Senator Lohan, you recognize?
Speaker, I move to place Bill Number Sixty in third reading. Motion to discuss.
There's no substitute version, right?
Yeah.
Okay. On the motion to place on third reading, Senator Lohan, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, if we really remember about three months ago, I mean, the executive branch, maybe a little over three months, the executive branch was pretty much saying the sky was falling. Prior to us being called into our first emergency session, there was an attempt by the executive branch to take monies out of autonomous agencies for payroll purposes. At least the autonomous agency they had oversight of, one of the autonomous agencies, right off the bat, and you know that we're on constant watch by Standard and Poor's, a rating agency. As soon as that came about, and as soon as they got wind that there was an attempt to extract or borrow, however it was phrased, money from the A.B. Wampat International Airport Authority Guam, the Standard and Poor's placed a call immediately, had teleconference with the Board of Directors, the Executive General Manager, on the possibilities of what might happen if this should happen. That whole time, we had since discovered that not only was the airport being looked at as a source of revenue, but also the Port Authority, if not mistaken, GPA. I think water works with that. This prompted right away, Mr. Speaker, my introduction of Bill Number Sixty. Again, an act to prohibit the governor from transferring funds from the Antonio B. Wampat International Airport Authority Guam for the general purposes of the government of A little over a month ago, maybe going in two months now, when the rating agency was out here, I had the opportunity to sit down with Standard and Poor's in a meeting with the airport regarding their situation, their ratings, and all that. They were the ones that brought the bill up to me prior to my even bringing it up to them. They asked for the status of the bill, and I said, at the time I was able to report that the bill had already had a public hearing, and that it's awaiting to get on the floor, the committee report was already done, we're just waiting to go into session. At that time, we could not put it into session yet because we hadn't gone into session. They recommended an expeditious move for us to be able to do that. A couple weeks after that, I met with Ron Simpson, the person that is tasked to oversee FAA projects out here in Guam. And during a ribbon-cutting ceremony, or actually, I'm sorry, a groundbreaking ceremony at the airport for the parallel runway, he also asked me the status on Bill Number Sixty. They had great concerns. Mr. Speaker, if you remember back in the Twenty-Eighth Guam Legislature, the airport was in a dilemma in which they, by September thirtieth, they had to pay back in excess of two million dollars that was designated for airport operations, airport infrastructure. And you remember also that prior to that, there was funds that were taken away or borrowed from the airport to rectify another facility that had nothing to do with airport operations. And so upon the revelation of that, FAA was ready to hold all the funding, all airport funding, all funding that were designated to the A.B. Wampat International Airport Authority Guam. But not only that, but they would have to pay back in excess of two million dollars as well for using funds other than what it was designated for. And if you can remember, Mr. Speaker, that we had to include this measure in a budget bill, because just like the government of Guam had a budget to pass by October first, the airport authority also had a deadline of September thirtieth, October first, if this wasn't rectified, that they had to take this money out and pay for it, and not only that, but risk or lose the funding that was designated to them already. We reacted, Mr. Speaker, by, we were lucky in the sense, because there was properties along Chalan Pasahero that was actually properties that DPW had in their inventory, that the airport authority was maintaining anyway. So we had to react to be able to put that under airport properties in lieu of that, to show that, again, the airport basically paid for that property for airport operations. Mr. Speaker, we don't want to go through that again. We don't want to have measures like this come about. It's a violation of bond covenant. People will say, well, it's already in the bond covenant. Well, yeah, it isn't the bond covenant, you cannot, not an autonomous agency. These are for strictly airport operations and infrastructure needs of the airport. And to do that, again, will jeopardize not only our bond rating, but future projects that the airport may have to borrow for, but not only that, will look at government-wide and jeopardize government-wide our bond rating. So, Mr. Speaker, all I'm asking my colleagues here today again is for us to, you know, when in nineteen seventy-six, when the legislature recognized the importance of creating an autonomous government agency with all necessary powers to operate and expand its civilian airport to meet the needs of the traveling public, as well as a joint agreement with the United States and corporate investors in our expanding tourism industry, I'm just asking again, my colleagues here, to support Bill Number Sixty. It codifies into law, again, what is already in their covenant, their bond covenant, that, again, autonomous means just that, they have to do with their money for their strict operations, not to divert the funds to other operations, as we have seen already, when these agencies, when federal agencies threaten to hold back monies designated for projects, but not only that, again, threaten the agency that diverted those funds, that not only would they hold back those fundings, but you have to pay that back with interest. So with that, Mr. Speaker, again, you know, I hope we don't see this again, but I, again, I want to solidify, codify it, and that, again, although the autonomous agencies are autonomous, the agency heads, the directors, general managers, and all that are appointed by the executive branch, and that is their boss, although their ultimate boss is the people of Guam and their board of directors, sometimes they succumb to the powers of the executive branch. And so with that, Mr. Speaker, I want to, again, ask my colleagues to support this bill, again. The rating agencies are watching, they want it to happen, the FAA is watching and want it to happen because, again, of previous doings and the attempt, again, just a few months ago in a doing. Now with that, again, I want to thank you, and I'll ask my colleagues to support Bill Number Sixty. Thank you very much.
Speaker Pincot?
Just briefly, Mr. Speaker, if the author of the bill, I have no objection, I would like to amend the title of the bill itself and just to delete the wording "Governor From" and make it read like this, "An Act to Prohibit the Transferring of Funds from the Antonio B. Wampat International Airport Authority for General Purposes of the Government of Guam." I think it's obvious already that we know, rather than highlighting, you know, Governor From, let's say, "An Act to Prohibit the Transferring of Funds from the Antonio B. Wampat Guam International Airport Authority for General Purposes of the Government of Guam."
We have to correct that as well, because there's, actually, there are two things in the books in regards how that's done, and they're both correct.
Let's take a one-minute recess so we can work out what the title of the airport authority is, as well as how you want to change the title of the bill, okay?
Do we have that amendment?
Yes.
Senator Pincot?
Thank you. I do have an amendment to Bill Number Sixty, just to change the title to read as follows, "An Act to Prohibit the Transferring of Funds from the Antonio B. Wampat International Airport Authority, comma, Guam, for General Purposes of the Government of Guam."
Okay, on that motion, is there any objection, or that objection? Huh?
No, no, no.
Yeah, just throughout the bill.
Well, right now, this motion is the title. I'm not amending anything, I'm sitting up here, so. Do you want to make it?
I'm in.
Oh, wait, 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 do you want to amend this amendment, or you want to make another amendment later? No, I think the neatest and cleanest way is we just, this is the title, let's get the title done. Any objection?
Okay.
Okay, are there any other motions that people would like to make? Senator Lohan, you've already spoken on the bill, you can close, but I wouldn't recommend you do so now. Anybody else wish to make an amendment? I always recognize a duty.
Okay, thank you then, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to make an amendment that throughout the bill, that the title in itself, the title of the airport authority, be also reflected in Page One and Two. Page One is on line nine, and Page Two is line twelve.
Okay, on that motion? No objection. Are there any motions that people would like to make, adding agencies to this, not adding agencies to this, anything like that? Nope? Okay. So on the main motion, do you wish to close, Senator Lohan, or should we just send it down?
No, just like to thank my colleagues and send it down. I want to thank the good senior senator, the statesman that he is. My message has been sent. Thank you very much.
You're more than welcome. On the motion to place in third, any objection? Without objection, the motion carries. All right, we are now venturing into that uncharted territory of passes on file. I believe that Forty-three is up next, all right? Wait, 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 wait. So we'll dispose of Forty-three, however we're going to dispose of it, but then we're going to take a brief recess so that we can take a look at what other POFs we're actually going to deal with here, because I noticed that one of these is already a POF two, which means it gets passed on file one more time, it's gone into the twilight zone. So you do recognize that three passes on file constitutes referral to the inactive file. So we'll take a brief recess, try and coordinate these POFs here and get it squared away. The first one is Forty-three. Senator Calvo?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move to accept Bill Number Forty-three as further substituted by the committee.
That's been passed out?
Yes, it has.
Okay, on the motion to accept? There is an objection? Okay, on the motion to accept, there is an objection, it's going to require eight votes. All those in favor? Uno, dos, tres, cuatro, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, all right. Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Uh, Mr. Speaker, I further move that Bill Number 43, as further substituted by the committee, be moved into the third reading.
On that motion, Senator Calvo?
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Speaker, point of order.
Certainly.
The, the bill, Mr. Speaker, does not pursuant to the requirement of a, of Title 2, GCA 2107, that all land exchange bills, et cetera, are required to have appraisals attached to the bill in order to be placed in the third reading file, and those appraisals must be current. And the bill does not contain that, Mr. Speaker.
That's understood.
And that committee report does not contain that.
On the point of order, I did look up the citation that you handed us, Senator Pangolino, yesterday, and I don't know why it was drafted the way it was, but it says that the measure shall not be entertained in third reading. Currently, we're not entertaining it in third reading, we're entertaining it in second reading, so there is no prohibition against discussion of this in the second reading. Secondarily, if you look at the bottom of the citation that you handed out, the compiler of laws noted there were three exceptions already covering the 20th and 21st legislatures, where legislatures had exempted specific transactions in three public laws subsequent to the passage of this act. So clearly, there's a precedent for the legislature to, at least, looking at the compiler of laws notation, to entertain measures notwithstanding this provision. But at the very minimum, while I continue considering this, there's nothing that prohibits the discussion of the bill in the second reading. So when we come to the end of second reading...
I, I would just say, Mr. Speaker, that the more proper motion would be then notwithstanding that motion to be placed in the third, given that we can't act on it unless the motion is notwithstanding that to get it to the third. If it gets to the, the third reading file...
Well, again, it could be, but the odd thing, again, about the construction of the statute is rather than saying that "shall not be discussed in second reading," it says "shall not be discussed in third," which is kind of foolish on the face of it, since you really don't discuss anything in third reading. So it's an odd, it's an odd construction of the statute. Let me think about it, Senator Pangolino, about whether or not this requires a notwithstanding, but I won't prohibit discussion on the bill if Senator Calvo wishes to discuss it.
Yes, I do, Mr. Speaker.
And, and I'll consider whether or not it does require. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Uh, Mr. Speaker, the residents of Baragada have, for the last 20 years, made use and benefited from the properties of Mr., Mrs. Francis Cepeda's property, and has been used as a ponding basin to prevent flooding in the village. The Department of Public Works upon completing a study in 1987, found it necessary to use Mrs. Cepeda's property to mitigate flooding in the village. Mr. Speaker, that following year, the government of Guam proposed a land exchange with lot number 15, Block E, Track 9 of Baragada. All government agencies required to review the proposal supported this proposal. It wasn't until 1993 that the late Senator Frank Santos introduced Bill Number 196 to facilitate the land exchange. However, the property was placed into the Land Trust, Chamorro Land Trust Commission inventory prior to the proposed bill's consideration. Mr. Speaker, Francis Cepeda and her family have not received any compensation or relief from the government of Guam. An offer for a land exchange on the use of her property or the initiation of eminent domain proceedings have not occurred over the last 20 years. Mr. Speaker, I'm asking for your support and support of my, my colleagues and members of this legislature to right a wrong. This particular bill, it had another, it was heard in Bill, as Bill 387, in the, in the 28th Guam Legislature, and in testimonies in the 28th, as well as testimonies presented in this particular bill, all government agencies saw this and saw a need to rectify this wrong. Whether it was Joe Borha from Land Management, members from the administration, including the Chamorro Land Trust, there was no negative statements nor testimony put in regards to righting a wrong that has committed, been committed for so many, I'm not calling it a wrong, I'm calling it inverse condemnation, where properties are taken, taken and taken without any compensation. So again, Mr. Speaker, it's a very simple bill, and it allows a transference of properties as, as a result of this taking of properties. And I might, I might also add that for this particular piece of property, when you take a look at the square footage, they are actually receiving less property if this is, is consummated and is ratified into law. Mr. Speaker, there's been some issues that have been brought up by some of my colleagues, and that was why, of course, the need to provide a substituted, or, excuse me, a further substituted bill that would clarify certain language to ensure that, again, we were following proper procedures, but then at the same time, following the spirit of laws that have been passed. But as I also look at, well, anyway, Mr. Speaker, that's all I have to say at this point on the bill, but again, I'm asking for your support and asking for members of the body's support in the passage of Bill Number 43. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
You recognize?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise in support of compensating the Cepeda family. I rise in support of figuring out a way to right that wrong. I don't rise in support of righting one wrong by inflicting another wrong, because two wrongs don't make a right. Everybody's skirting around the issue. Of course, we want to support the Cepeda family. Even I, Mr. Speaker, who don't support the second half of this bill, wanted to make sure that the good chairman did it right. That's why I raised the point of order yesterday, so that if he really wants to right a wrong, he's got to do it the right way. And that's why you have a substitute bill, because he didn't know how to do it the right way, or at least overlooked the work, what needed to be done in order to at least be able to enact the law the right way. The wrong way to do it is to inflict a wrong on the Chamorro Land Trust. And everybody's skirting around the issue of, of how are we going to right that wrong? It's a philosophical objection that I have, Mr. Speaker, in that we are now going to start dismantling the Chamorro Land Trust with this bill. The property that's been identified to be exchanged is property that's in the inventory of the Chamorro Land Trust. It's as pure and simple as that, and that is the only objection I have with this bill. Not that the Cepetas shouldn't be paid, or not that they shouldn't get a land trust, a land exchange, but it's where it's going to come from. It's dismantling something that people, our people, and I know the Cepetas are Chamoros, but this, the idea of the trust is to preserve the Chamorro Land Trust and the Chamorro lands in a trust forever. We had people camp down at Adalou to put it in place and to protect the trust. We had people go on hunger strikes. We had members of this body go to federal prison and gave up their life, literally, for the Chamorro Land Trust. And now, my good colleague, is choosing to right a wrong by inflicting a wrong on that. And I say that, Mr. Speaker, because there are alternatives. Down the street from where my father lives was a family that was flooded out every year. For years, they were flooded out. They were living in the house, not vacant land. How did we right that wrong? We bought the property. FEMA funds were used under the flood mitigation program in order to compensate the family and build a ponding basin. Four lots down from my father's house, an empty lot in which water naturally ponds there, the same situation we have here. How did we right that wrong? The property was bought through FEMA funds, and now there's a ponding basin. I'm saying it's the choice that we're making in the second part of this bill that I cannot support. The first part, I wholeheartedly support. I even offered my good colleague that I would draft a bill finding the local funds if we don't want to go through FEMA funds to appropriate in order to compensate the Cepetas. But the choice we're making is, we don't want that. We want to take it from the Chamorro Land Trust, pure and simple. And that's the choice everybody's going to be making here, Mr. Speaker, is whether we want to right a wrong by inflicting another wrong. And it's a grave wrong that we're inflicting, Mr. Speaker, almost unequal with the wrong that's been inflicted on the Cepetas. I don't doubt that. 20 years not to be able to use your property. You know, Mr. Speaker, the back of my dad's house is a field, 20,000 square meters. It floods all the time. When the rains come, all the land from up by the Camachos, the Pablo's, Mangilo, Route 10, it just naturally drains into my family's land. When it rains hard, we get 10 feet of water in over 20,000 square meters. That's a wrong. Wasn't a choice we made. I'm just saying that circumstances present wrongs. It's when we right those wrongs and we present our attention to those wrongs that we have to make conscious decisions on how are we going to right those wrongs. You know, Mr. Speaker, once again, there are alternatives to righting this wrong. And when the offer was made, it was rejected and say, "I want to take it out of Chamorro Land Trust." That's all. Dismiss it. Dismiss every other alternative except taking land out of the Chamorro Land Trust. Don't let anybody, anybody say that that's the only way to correct this wrong, because it's not the only way. And that, Mr. Speaker, I think is something that we're all going to have to answer to. Maybe not today, maybe not in 2010, maybe not in 2050, but our children are going to have to answer that. When they look back and they said, "What did you do? People died to set up that trust, and you decided that you were just going to dismantle it, and you started it. And you stood there, and I understand you tried to right a wrong, but boy, that was not the only way to right that wrong, and the choice that you made is going to last much longer than our presence here, in this hall, and on this earth." Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Anyone else wish to speak on the bill?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, my colleague who just spoke prior to myself has said it eloquently, and I too feel exactly the same as he does. I guess it would be much easier for me just to stand up here and say, "Ditto to, to everything." I, I feel, Mr. Speaker, that, and I felt this, actually, since the first time that I've actually came to this, to serve in this body, in the 23rd Guam Legislature, and at that time, I remember vividly that land exchanges and, and land rezoning were like hotcakes. I mean, and they were attached to any bill, not necessarily, you know, a budget bill. And it was something that I've seen throughout the other legislatures have started to, to change. We became a little bit more reserved, a little bit more careful in, in how we do this. As a result of many land takings, of course, by the government for public use, and although the government does not have a bottomless pit of money so, so that they can reimburse the individuals who are affected, lands were actually put aside, they were reserved. Acres and acres of lands are, and I say "are," there are lands that are still on reserve that are available for any land exchanges. Unfortunately, that reserves is not the reserves that we're looking at to do any exchange for this particular property or this property in question. And a comment, of course, is that, well, all of the best lots have been selected, so, you know, we don't want any of those lands or lots at the reserves. So what we're doing then, in essence, Mr. Speaker, is actually cherry-picking properties that are currently listed in the Chamorro Land Trust. And I feel, yes, that the Chamorro Land Trust lands are critical, critical for the future of the Chamorro people. And Senator Ben and I, and yourself, Mr. Speaker, and the former Speaker, Umpinko, basically, the four of us, we're basically the, are the only ones who are here at the time when this was passed. We were here when Angel Santos was pushing for this. We were here when all of the people were out there, basically banging the glass windows here, telling us that we need to pass this act, that we need to be able to reserve these properties. And yet, I know that... And yet, I know that this body can basically do anything. And I know in your statement earlier that when the question was brought up about a law, basically a mandate that says, and I have a copy of it, about having to have two appraisals on all land concerns. And last year, and I kept this all the time in my drawer, just in case this comes up, and here it is again, the same issue has arisen. And yet, no appraisals again is still available. And then, in the bottom, yes, where it says cross-references, where the Legislature, the 20th Guam Legislature and the 21st Guam Legislature had basically went, made the exemption to this. And although it is a set precedent, Mr. Speaker, I still don't feel that just because one legislature cannot tie the hands of future legislatures does not make this right. So these three bills that were passed in the past does not make what we're doing right today. And this fact that we are cherry picking properties to give, and I have no objection, I need to make that clear, that I really have no objection to, yes, I agree, that we need to address this issue. But I still feel that there are other solutions. The problem that I have is the cherry picking of properties. Because then, we also have in the docket a bill right now that is also being considered for a land exchange. And this also, this land exchange has also been, this particular property has been picked. And we didn't even know about it until it was brought to our attention when we went to visit the Ordnance Land Field. Only to find, because this was a land that was being used for fill and coverage of the landfill, was going, was being used for that purpose. So in return, they want prime property. And although we say, yes, this is an area for area, which is different from a value for value, and why in this particular case that was used, I don't know. I'm not the author of this bill. And yet, we say that it's a simple bill, but yet is so far-reaching and so impactful for the future. And when I say for the future, not just for the Chamorro people, but for future legislatures, for future legislations, for future land exchanges. Why again? Because we're going to say, well, a precedent has been set. Therefore, it's a green light again for us to go ahead and do this. So if a precedent was set in the 20th and the 21st Guam Legislature for this exemption, so therefore, oh, it's fine now for this body, the 29th Guam Legislature, to do the same. Because nobody, there's no watchdog for this legislature but ourselves. And even when some of us try to watch ourselves and our actions, it goes in one ear and out the other. Because nobody can control anyone here but the people of Guam, the voters of Guam. I have heard the discussions taking place that there are various solutions. And if precedence, again, is going to be an issue, then why don't we look at the precedents in such where some properties, ponding basins, have actually been paid out of FEMA monies? To me, that would be the very first thing we do. Because there are monies available to do this. Then the second option would be, yes, government monies, local government monies. But we all know where that, where we're at with that. And then the third option, yes, is to do the land exchanges, but from lands that are in the reserves for that specific purpose. Mr. Speaker, I mean, we talked and we passed resolutions to the federal government encouraging them to do the right thing, to do the moral thing. And here we are, just doing the opposite. Then we're no better than the federal government. In closing, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to say that I do do support, yes, like the previous speaker, the fact that the families need to be either compensated or have a land exchange. But I surely cannot support the depletion of the Chamorro Land Trust lands. They have very few valuable lands available that they could use to generate funds so they continue to support the Chamorro people, not just today and not just tomorrow, but like Ben said, forever, basically. But if that's not the policy of this legislature to protect the Chamorro Land Trust funds, I mean lands, you know, then I think maybe we need to make a decision, is just remove it entirely. And then it's up for grabs by anybody. And when that happens, Mr. Speaker, and I will publicly say this, I do not want to become a part of this body today or in the future. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Before I recognize the closing speaker, I've been, you probably noticed that I've had my head down the entire time that folks have been talking, because I've been, the reason why is I've been reading through these sections here. When Senator Pangolinon raised his point of order, which is a very good point of order, by the way, well, let me construct this very clearly. First off, you know, based on Senator Wampat's comments, the only issue I'm looking at is whether or not this can be placed in third reading, all right? All the fine arguments about the morality of doing it or not notwithstanding are decisions that the group has to make about whether or not it wants to pass the bill. That's up to them. The only issue is here is can it be placed on third reading? The first thing I look at in subsection B of 2107 is a specific prohibition. And to read it word for word, not the entirety of it, but the part that prohibits. 2107B, the first sentence says, "No such bill authorizing the transfer of land or leasing of land may be considered by the legislature on third reading unless," and then all the qualifications come in. I don't know who wrote this particular section, but the language is troubling. And the reason why, to me, my opinion, the language is troubling is it says that no such bill shall be considered by the legislature in third reading. The closest thing to the consideration of a matter in third reading that I can analogize is the voting, yes or no, on a particular matter. I don't think it covers the placing. So I don't see a prohibition against the body voting to place, presuming in fact that there are eight votes to do so. But there may be a prohibition against voting on it. The question was raised whether or not that would require a notwithstanding vote. We do have, according to the compiler laws, three examples of exemptions that occurred quite a few legislatures ago. And again, Senator Wampat, I'm not saying that as a reason to do anything on the bill. But I think it would be prudent on my part to consult both with counsel and to take a look at what the 20th and 21st legislatures did, as best as the record can be reconstructed. So I'm going to read, reserve an opinion on whether or not, at this point, reserve a ruling on whether or not prior to a vote on this bill, it'll require a vote of 10 to vote on it, notwithstanding the restriction. But I will rule that, at this point, there is absolutely nothing in this statute that prohibits the placement of the bill on third reading. So I will permit a motion to proceed that places it on third reading, but we're going to have to take a look at how this all works out with respect to when we get to third reading, whether or not we can vote on it. Senator Wampat, in her statement, did bring up one interesting point, which I hadn't really raised yet or thought about, which is the general principle of the binding of future legislatures by previous legislatures. I don't know if that was in effect here. Clearly, standing rules do bind current legislatures, though, so a vote of 10 might be there, I don't know. So I'm going to talk to counsel and I'm going to look at these three exemptions that have occurred previously and see how those were constructed. But we will definitely, unless you guys object and overrule me, proceed with a motion to place in third reading. As long as the understanding is there that I have not yet ruled on whether or not we will vote in third reading subject to a, do you understand what I'm saying? In other words, the motion to place in third reading can proceed with eight votes. Senator Calvo, I'm open to a question if you have one. Well, I can't discuss that question, but if you want. I just want, I just, no, you can make a statement. I just want everyone to understand what I'm saying. Well, I just want to make sure you guys understand what I'm saying.
I understand. I may, if I may be permitted to speak on the motion?
Of course. I just want to make sure everyone understands what my ruling is, Ray?
There's obviously, and I do want to make the point that again...
Senator Calvo, one moment. Ray, do you have a question about my ruling?
Yes.
Okay. Let's dispose of the ruling first thing in close.
Mr. Speaker, if I'm hearing you correctly, consideration is just that, voting on the matter.
Yeah.
And so, before I would prefer, before that the matter is moved to third, we can't stop, in my view, unless there's some mechanism for which that can be done. And I'm not saying that I'm the parliamentarian here, but it's my view that if the bill does go to third reading, there is no discussion in third reading, as you know.
No, there's no discussion at all, but you do recall that...
So the question is whether or not it can be considered, in other words, can it be voted on? And so I think we need a ruling on that before it goes to third reading.
My, all right, my view, my ruling, is that you don't. There are motions that are made in third reading from time to time, such as, "I move that we vote on this bill without engrossment."
Correct.
It's not discussed. In this case, all right, it would not be, it would be procedural. It wouldn't be a motion for discussion. It would simply be that when we come to the vote, a motion will have to be made that we are voting notwithstanding. Okay?
Yeah, and it's my understanding that that notwithstanding sentence is already incorporated as part of the language of the bill.
I'm sorry, I guess I'm really not communicating very well. The issue at hand right now that I am confronting here, based on the point of order raised by Senator Pangolinon, is whether to allow the thing to proceed, whether the law prohibits the progress.
No, it does not.
Well...
That's my view.
I know. I'm explaining my view. My view, Senator Tenorio, is it does not prohibit the forward progress of the bill.
Sure.
But I am leaving open the question. I'm saying that the most strict interpretation of the statute that has been cited in the point of order can only be construed as preventing voting on the bill, not the placement of the bill in third.
And, Mr. Speaker, I'm asking if you could make such determination before...
Oh, absolutely. I'm the speaker. I am the one who resolves points of order, so yes, I can make such determination. Senator Wampat? We're still in the point of order. I just, I want to resolve this.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I do have a question.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Well, go ahead, Senator Wampat, and then. See, earlier you said you wanted to close, Eddie, that's why.
No, it's a point of order because there, this is a situation where there are several laws. And certain laws state one thing, but then there is a specific law that is focused on inverse condemnation. And, okay, anyway.
Well, all right, I'll deal with it. I'll deal with it. I'll call you on you next. Senator Wampat?
I'm trying to formalize exactly how this is going to happen. You're saying that we could then vote with the eight votes, of course, to send it down to third. That's the first thing, right?
Right.
The second thing is that when we do go to, when we're voting then, and just before...
I may rule that it requires 10 votes to vote, or I may rule that it requires eight.
That was my question then, because if it's going to be notwithstanding, then, and will it then require 10 votes?
If I rule that it requires a notwithstanding, then it'll be 10. If I rule that it does not, it'll be a...
And at the time in which you're going to be making...
Or no motion will have to be made at all, because it'll be in third, so...
No, no, I understand that. You're jumping before I can even ask my question. Is that when, before you even make that announcement, you will be basically, like you said, explaining, first of all, what the interpretation is, so that everyone who are here now...
Will understand.
Hopefully, yeah, all 15 will be here now to hear then the rest of the argument. Thank you, then, Mr. Speaker.
Anyway, the point is, Senator Calvo, you had a question, Senator Calvo?
Mr. Speaker? Can I move for a recess?
You can, but I've already ruled. All right, so. We'll take a one-minute recess.
I would like to...
Okay.
Closing, the closing?
Yeah.
Yes, I'd like to close. I'd like to speak? But I need to speak on it, too. Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, again, I want to thank my colleagues, both those in support of the measure, as well as those that have noted their opposition, but actually, their opposition not on, in regards to redressing a wrong on a land taking that has occurred on our citizens, on one of our local citizens. But obviously, they have some issues, and whether it's on the recitation of procedural laws that mandate appraisals, or in a general philosophy in regards to the Chamorro Land Trust inventories. In closing, I'd like to address a couple of the issues. Issue number one, though we have solved the issue in regards to the concern on appraisals or notwithstanding, there was language put on this substitute bill, and I want to thank my colleague for some of the information he brought forth in regards to this. We put it in the bill. In my opinion, it's not a necessity because there is case law in the past, as well as, if you look at the recitation in the, in the, in the in the requirements for two appraisals, it's based on an earlier one that is general when it comes to land swaps or land transfers. When you look into specific law, and again, with the passage of 2273, which has been cited in my legislation, this is now not general, but here is a law specific to inverse condemnation. And of course, when you look into the details of 2273, realizing that the spirit of the law was about righting a wrong, where government took properties, took properties, and I hate to say it, but without any compensation, and without, and basically might made right. So there was, in this law, the spirit of a wrongdoing that occurred as a result of a government action. It does make mention of surveys, but not of appraisals. So even in the contention brought forth by the minority leader, I beg to differ with her opinion. I do not think it's required, because again, we have several laws that are in order. If you look at orders and some laws in place and you put them together, obviously, and it has been ruled in the past, where you go to the specific law dealing with a certain issue such as inverse condemnation. Now, as to the matter of the Chamorro Land Trust, and that was a very, very, a good points put out by the Senate, by the good minority senator. I must add, but, we have a government of Guam, and we've created different infrastructures or structures that have come about as a law supposedly for the public interest. Now with that, and again, here comes a question. When you have a government agency or an apparatus that was formed, or a commission that was formed by a government supposedly for the good of the public, the good of the people, does the government agency or commissioner entity serve the people? Or do the people serve the government agency or entity? I might remind my colleagues that when the late Democratic Senator Santos introduced this piece of legislation, which identified the properties which at the time were in the inventory of the government of Guam and not in the inventory of the Chamorro Land Trust, these properties were specified. These properties were specified for the land transfer. What occurred... What occurred, obviously, is that as Chamorro Land Trust came about, and inventories that were not considered inventory for the government of Guam, or use of the government of Guam, when the conveyance occurred to the Chamorro Land Trust, an issue, of course, then the issue arose. The Chamorro Land Trust, and I'm gonna cite Public Law twenty-two dash seventy-three, and seventy-five-one-one-nine of Title Twenty-One of Guam Code, stated in essence that the Chamorro Land Trust and various other directors should identify land under its jurisdiction, which could be utilized by the governor to exchange private property, property with private landowners to compensate them. However, and I'll give you the commission, the Chamorro Land Trust, to this point, has not designated a single piece of property to be used for land exchange. There were properties that were identified when the, when, when Chamorro Land Trust did form, but with those properties that were identified by the government of Guam for surplus, the agencies of the government, which include the Chamorro Land Trust, did never, did not move forward in the identification of properties to be set aside for compensation. And so I understand, so I understand the issues brought up by, by the good senator, senators. If we, we can remember, what is this all about? Does the government serve the people, or do the people serve the government? This is a family where there has been a wrong. Their property has been confiscated for twenty years, and the late Senator Santos, in his desire to right a wrong, identified a piece of property. But now, the government is there, the government controls that property, and now might makes right, and ownership is not, you know, again, if you own it, this is Chamorro Land Trust, if you take it away from Chamorro Land Trust, it's gonna destroy the Chamorro Land Trust in the end. Something is wrong here. Does the cart become before the horse, or the horse before, come before the cart? Obviously, this piece of land was identified. It was identified many, many years ago, before Chamorro Land Trust controlled it. Unfortunately, and whether it's been, for whatever reason, maybe there wasn't enough money for FEMA to pay for, for this one, or maybe there was enough money for the local coffers to pay for, for payment for these, to pay the folks, but for whatever reason, no compensation has occurred. I must add, if I, if we did have extra money, maybe that's what I'd do. I'd introduce a bill to appropriate money from our local coffers to pay for it, but we just don't got that kinda extra money. I wish I had control over FEMA. My colleagues seem to be very sure that FEMA's gonna give us the money. I'm not so sure. And if they were to introduce a legislation to appropriate from FEMA, that would be the first time in history that you have a Guam law that appropriates money from FEMA to pay for a land transfer. So, Mr. Speaker, I'm just as passionate as my colleagues. I do not want to see the destruction of the Chamorro Land Trusts. I believe in the spirit of Chamorro Land Trusts, but ultimately, Mr. Speaker, government of Guam and the Chamorro Land Trusts, they serve the people, not the other way around. And again, I ask my colleagues to please support this bill that will correct a wrong. Thank you very much.
On the motion to place the bill in third reading, uh, do we have division, or is there an objection, or... Nope. Are you objecting? Okay, so we do have objection. All those in favor of the motion to place in third reading, please signify by raising your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, okay, it's gone now. Okay, we're gonna take a very brief recess, just to collect our thoughts about the balance of the pass-on files. I wanna find out what folks wanna do with this, and, okay? So take a brief recess. The next bill before us is Bill Number Three. Senator Tenorio, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move to place Bill Number Three in the third reading. I'd like to speak on the motion.
Senator Tenorio, you recognize?
Mr. Speaker, the Public Law twenty-five dash twenty-six enacted our current prohibition against lame-duck hiring new unclassified employees or granting pay increases to existing unclassified employees. And the, the gist of this, Mr. Speaker, is to include the public auditor and the attorney general, which the existing public law predates, they didn't, they were non-existent at the time of the passage of this act. And the author of this original law, Senator Casparvar, basically, in his legislative findings, has summarized the thoughts of many of the public, which is that the granting of these pay increases for unclassified employees and hiring of these individuals by persons who have lost an election, whether they be a primary or a general, and, or if they seek to not run for another term of office, should not be allowed to give higher salaries and also to hire additional unclassified employees, as well as contracts and et cetera, which would result in a significant depletion of funds. And of course, the incumbent attorney general is, has opined that a significant amount of money was lost from the, the previous incumbent, the attorney general, and of course, our office of the public auditor being elected position also should have certain protections, which are similar to those that exist for governor, mayor, and senators. And so, Mr. Speaker, I've been informed, and it was known, that at the time that we moved this bill, that there were technical corrections, the compiler of laws had changed Sections sixty-two twenty-seven and sixty-two twenty-eight, and recodified them to sixty-two thirty and thirty-one respectively. This is a ser, this is simply a technical correction, which our legal counsel, by our standing rules, already has the authority to correct, and if it's necessary, I will move an amendment to that effect. But, Mr. Speaker, I ask for my colleagues to help me to expand this lame-duck legislation, which will allow for individuals, especially in those elected positions, and that's exactly what this addresses, to not spend public funds at the expense of all of us, and of course, as a result of the persons who are then assuming the budgets which were passed prior to the elections that take place within our island. So I ask my colleagues to consider this bill and please support it. Ms. Massey.
Senator Ishizaki, you recognize?
Mr. Speaker, I rise in support of this bill. It's a good bill, and I, the intent is, is very noble, and I think we need to support it. You know, we saw in this past year the abuses by one lame-duck official, who thoroughly abused the funds of the office of the attorney general, and I think that was, that this, this will prevent that kind of abuses and hold that person accountable. So I, I, I support it, and I hope my colleagues also support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I have an amendment I'd like to propose, and it's been handed out, and the gist of the amendment is that, why don't we just say it? Anybody who's unclassified, who works for an elected official, who has declared candidacy, can't get a raise until after that term. Why are we just targeting certain people? Abuses can be just as, as easily perpetrated by sitting officials, winners, losers, non-candidates. Let's just say, once you declare your candidacy, then the unclassified's working for you, in which you have unfettered power basically over them, will not be eligible for pay increases. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and the bill, the amendment's been passed out.
On the Pangolinen amendment? On the amendment? You wanna read the amendment? Okay, we'll have a one-minute recess, so you can read the amendment. Senator Tenorio, do you have something you should say?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I appreciate the sentiments of the, the mover of this amendment, and I, I, I'd like to see something a little bit more studied, and perhaps that we can get input from other, the cross-sections of our community that probably would be affected by this, but this deals with pay raises, and also deals with an individual who files a candidacy for a higher position, and while, again, I, I understand the sentiments, I rise in objection because we, we have a number...
Point of information, Mr. Speaker. It has nothing to do with a candidate moving to a higher office. It's a candidate sitting in an office, period. If he's running for reelection, he's still, upon declaration of the candidacy, the bill or the amendment states that they will not be able to grant pay raises to the employees there. That's it. Just as, you know, we're saying that the abuse happens is that you grant pay raises after the candidate loses, the sitting candidate loses, this only says that for that same reason, that no pay raises will be given once a candidate declares his candidacy who is sitting in a position. It doesn't say up for a higher office at all. That's the information I wanted to impart.
I, I thank the gentleman for his clarification. Again, if, assuming real-case scenario, I, as a sitting senator, decide that we're, well, one of my members of my office is no longer gonna be working for me, has decided to go for green of pastures or what have you, and then I need to have someone else assume that function, and then his additional responsibility comes with additional pay, then if the member of the governor's staff has a similar situation where they lose an individual and he is asked to assume certain responsibilities, he's no longer gonna be able to carry not just the responsibility, but the compensation that goes along with that. It strikes me as though this is something that would inhibit the elected official from being able to compensate his employees based on the type of responsibilities, be it what they are now, and that they've done an exceptional job, and for X number of years.
Point of information, Mr. Speaker. When you give somebody new duties and responsibilities, you've changed title. I mean, even though they're unclassified, they're still structured into position titles. So you can't say that, you know, a program coordinator four is going to remain in a program coordinator four, I'm gonna give him a supervisory position responsibilities, and then I'm gonna still compensate him at program coordinator four plus half of the supervisory position. Even the unclassified structure doesn't work that way. And the other point of information is that we wanted to maybe present the amendment to be, for more study, if I look, and, and input, if I look at the witness testimony in this, there were zero people who signed up.
I think, I think on your second point, you're venturing outside the point of information area.
Yeah, so the information is, there were also no input from, on the original bill.
But that's not, now we're debating.
We've been debating since the point of information began.
I, I disagree, and, and, and I'm going to make this very clear. Point of information is intended to supply information. On the first one and a half points that Senator Pangolinen made, he was supplying information. The second half of the first, of the second point of information, I think, was venturing a debate. But there's nothing to prohibit a member who has information from asking for a point of information, supply that information.
Of course.
Now, I say this in part, too, because sometimes a member stand up and say point of information, and then ask a question. That also is prohibited. The point of information is the supplying of information, not the request of it. To get up and ask a question is to debate out of order. So, anyway, your first and you, half of your second points of information are well taken. The second half is not. So if you're gonna offer another point of information, make sure you're supplying information, Senator Pangolinen, and not debating the committee report. Senator Tenorio, proceed.
Thank you. Further, Mr. Speaker, it's very important, of course, I think, that all of us as members of this body try to consult with legal authority, and I've done so in the break, trying to get some clarity on what the effect of this is, and our legal counsel informed me that there effectively is no end to this process, in that there's potentially the ability for this law to have an unintended consequence, which you've spoken on in previous bills, and the consequence that they have had, and that you may not be able to give a increase to salaries of your employees in perpetuity. And if that is a legal counsel's initial reaction to this, then again, this gives me cause for concern, and I think we need to be very judicious in the way that we go about doing these things, and be careful that we're not enacting a statute which has unintended consequences. So again, I, I appreciate the efforts of the gentleman and his amendment, but I do rise in a point of objection. Thank you.
Very well. On the amendment, clearly, we do have division. All those in favor, do you just speak on the amendment, Senator Wampat? Okay, then you can speak, of course you can. Senator Wampat, you may speak. Proceed on the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I, I rise in, in support of this amendment, and, you know, and the reasons are because I think we're basically discriminating against only those who have lost, any candidate, basically, a sitting candidate who have lost, and, but then I do understand the, the scenario and what has happened in the past, and, and why, you know, there's a, this was necessary. However, I still feel, as the, the author of this amendment, that we shouldn't just have this for lame-duck candidates or elected officials, that this should apply across the board. And, and the reason why I say this, 'cause I've seen this in the past, is that if a candidate who has lost, can turn around and give racist to all of his people, the other would be a candidate who wants to make sure he or she wins, will go out then and hire or give racist to more people, so that then they can even work harder to make sure that the candidate wins. So, and, and then, of course, and heaven forbid that this is not true, but I know there, there's been talk about, you know, this actually hap, happening in the past, is that when you give pay raises to employees, unclassified employees, and then the time comes for fundraisers, the rule is, is that none of those tickets, you know, will come back. That means you're gonna pay for every single one of those tickets if you don't sell them. And the reason why you're able to buy those tickets is because they've given you the pay raises. So the gap then between what it is that you're normally supposed to get, and then for the additional support to get the candidate elected, those monies then will be pumped right into the campaign, and I think that's wrong. There's a fine line, I guarantee, but however, I think it's wrong. So this should be applicable...
I'm certain it's illegal.
...to be for, yes, it is illegal. But this should be for, you know, if it's done illegally, and for that purpose, then it is illegal. I, I mean, of course, I can do whatever I want with my money, but the intent, we all know, is not necessarily legal. So I think that this should be applicable for every sitting elected official. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, on the motion to adopt the amendment, we do have division. All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by raising an appendage. One, two, no, really short. Okay, the amendment does not carry. On the main motion? Yes, sir. Speaker of bingo, you are recognized. Certainly. We'll have a few minutes recess.
Basically, the, the two amendments that I have here, just to clarify really the language here, on, on, first is to amend Section One. By deleting the amended language in its entirety and replacing it to read as follows, is self-explanatory, you know? It's, 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 it's clear, as far as I'm concerned, it's clearer.
Do you wanna vote on both at the same time, or what?
I have a question. Okay, well, I have to...
You're recognized, Senator Wampat? Can, can I borrow a bill?
So, do I have the floor, Mr. Speaker?
I recognize your...
Oh, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I do, I do have a question for the, you know, author of this amendment, primarily because, I mean, I understand that he's taking everything out of Section One and substituting it with this new... it with this new one, however, it says Section One in its entirety, and when I'm looking at Section One, there is a section here that actually talks about the executive branch, and now, we're only talking about the Attorney General in this amendment. So, my question is, is the intent then now to just take out the executive branch and just only address now the Attorney General?
Who are you, who are you asking?
The author of this amendment.
Speaker, Speaker in Bingo, do you yield to the question? Okay, proceed.
Oh, did he answer? Oh, he's looking.
Can I have just a second recess? Let me, let me just refocus these things.
Okay, we'll take a one-minute recess. Speaker in Bingo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. My amendment is, first of all, on Bill Number Three, this is starting from line twenty-two to twenty-three on the first page, and on page two, one to three, and I'm mainly talking about the underline portion of the bill, and so, this is my first amendment.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, remember, I had asked him a question, so.
What's that?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I mean, for allowing the author to explain it. After, you know, reading, of course, the statements for both the executive branch and the legislative, you know, branch as well, it just seems somehow is that we just can't seem to go right, I mean, we're making sure somehow that with the Attorney General's office, that there's just no wiggle room whatsoever, and I'm just wondering whether the same language, if we're gonna be that strict, the same language should, you know, apply to both the executive branch that we have here and the legislature, but somehow, it's not the same, and those are just my thoughts, you know, somehow that we're just kinda over, overdoing it for the Attorney General's office. I think that the point has gotten across, but we should never, ever fail to always look at ourselves whenever we're going to impose something on, on the other branches, that we look at ourselves as well, and that make sure that we extend, if anything, the same language that we want to bind others, that we bind ourselves. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
On the amendment, Senator Pangolinan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, if I read this correctly, it substitutes, or deletes, the prohibition against hiring the employees now, and says, now you just can't give them pay raises, and that's, it's not additive to that section. The amended language, as I read it in Section One, is, no new contract workers, unclassified employees, may be hired. Now, that, according to the amendment, will be deleted, and it will just say, following the defeat of the Attorney General in a primary or general, no contract workers are employed in the office of the Attorney General may receive a pay increase. So, we're now changing the prohibition from hiring to just giving pay raises, so they can actually go out and hire, if I read the amendment correctly, and I'm not sure that's the true, the encompassing intention. You know, I proposed a, an amendment earlier that said, we can't give them pay raises, they said they don't wanna do that, they wanna study it some more. So, I, again, I think it was made, this for me would be a little bit more, I support the amendment, definitely, but I think I would support it as being additive, rather than to be substitute, a substitute for the existing amended language. So, I'm kinda torn in between the voting for this amendment, and then deleting the other one, because it kind of, the other one makes it okay to hire new people, and then you just can't give pay raises to ones that are there. So, so it really should be additive, I think, is, is, so, I would just like to amend the amendment, to just say, rather than to, by deleting the amended language, just to amend Section One, to read, to add after, at the end of it, after the end of the last sentence in Section One, add this language.
Clerk, have that?
And then, to include sitting ones who win. No, just kidding, Mr. Speaker. So, it would be just to add this language to the end of Section One, and not delete the amended language.
On the motion by Senator Pangolinan, is there any objection? Objection, the motion carries.
What about the second? Yeah, it should be the same. It really should be the same. And then the, did he present the second one also?
Not yet.
Okay, did we take care of the First Amendment?
We will. Any further discussion on the First Amendment by Senator, Speaker in Bingo? There being none, is there an objection? Without objection, the amendment carries.
Okay, the other amendment that has, it's already passed out, too. I'm looking at it, we, that, okay, this is rather than deleting then, the amended language in its entirety, just to, to add on, at the end of the sentence, so, take out the word delete on my own, you know, amendment, and just make this thing additive to what you have right now, the underline, not deleting. So, it's similar to the First Amendment.
On that amendment, any objection? Or objection, the amendment carries. On the main motion to place the bill as amended in third reading, is there any objection? Is there objection? Without objection, the motion carries. We have more or less, I think, exhausted what we had on the agenda. We do have some other bills that have been reported out by committee, I know there are some bills that members would like to put on. I suggest we recess until one-thirty tomorrow, get the word out that, well, first, let me ask the clerk, how are we doing on engrossment? Which one's fifty-nine?
The four.
How do we still have it? Was it passed on file? Which one is fifty-nine? Which one is fifty-nine? Jimmy's bill does not come back until next legislative day. Okay? So, we've, as I earlier said, we've pretty much exhausted what we have in second reading right now. I suggest we come back at one-thirty tomorrow.
Before you recess, Mr. Speaker, since a lot, a lot of us are, will be down at the forum tomorrow, can we, can I make a motion, and this motion stands, to make, to make a motion to, for time certain, in terms of voting for whatever is in third reading and the voting file?
That's what I was gonna say.
So, I, you know, I can make that motion, that by three o'clock tomorrow afternoon-
Let me ask the clerk-
That whatever we're doing by three o'clock, we'll be voting, we'll go down to third reading, and also take care of everything on the voting file.
Okay, you don't wanna vote at one-thirty?
No, well, aren't you gonna change the, I thought you were gonna adjourn-
No, what I was gonna say was that, you know, we say, everybody come back, be here at one-thirty tomorrow, that we then go down to third, continue voting, and then come back to motions and place some more bills on. But let me check with the clerk one more time, by one-thirty, will we have every bill Tell you what, here's what we'll do. We're gonna come back at two, wait, 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 we're gonna come back at two, we'll go back to motions first, to put some more bills on, but regardless of where we are, at three o'clock, we will dispose of whatever is in third reading. I understand that, but we have a lot in legislative concurrences, and we have a lot of bills, so if we're not voting until five, we'll be in here voting until seven. Is that what you want? All right, we'll come in at two. Can we at least compromise and vote at four? We'll come in at two, we'll go back to motions, place some more bills on. Can we compromise and vote at four instead of five? Does everybody plan on being down at this business thing? Well, you know. No, we're not gonna be done. Look, a session, to me, is always precedent over hobnobbing with a bunch, okay, so, if you insist on, thank you. If you insist on voting at five, which seems to me kinda whack, but, how about four-thirty? We'll vote at four-thirty, okay? We're gonna be here at two o'clock, we're gonna add stuff to the, to the agenda, we'll proceed on that, and at four o'clock, four-thirty, time certain, we'll begin voting. So, those of you who are wherever you are, be here at four-thirty to vote, you snooze, you lose, okay? No, that's gonna be a sue, and there's no motion, I'm just gonna go.
I think you need the motion for that, for time certain.
Then make a motion that time certain-
I'll give it for time certain, okay, by four-thirty-
We vote.
We vote, and go down to third reading, and also to dispose of everything in the voting file.
Fine. We don't need a motion to come back at two P.M.
No, 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 the speaker has that authority.
I will, I call us back in at two P.M., okay? On the motion by Speaker in Bingo, is there any objection? There being none, fine. We're gonna recess until two P.M. tomorrow.